I'm ready when you are.
At this time, we will allow the county to plan to do western or eastern. I will review of change to orders. Company's plan by plan to be decided.
Alright, so I'm gonna go line by line. And if y'all want any changes, have any comments, or wanna add any additional thing, just speak out and we will write it down.
These are actually going to be working.
This is the same thing that you already had, yes.
These were what the changes that we have had since June, February.
Plus the ones y'all made at the last meeting.
I didn't read, so you can, if you wanna take a hand drawing, coloring, set of on file, whatever you need to do, you can take some hard work and build it back before it's too easy. Everything that we've been working on is getting this covered.
Is it hot in here? It said on sixty-five, so I think it's doing, it's, 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 it's living its best life unfortunately.
Yeah, that doesn't get out of that.
Alright, so get us started, um, obviously just the revision date, which is unimportant.
First pages are the pages of the actual comp plan that have been changed. If you go in your real, your actual comp plan and you wanna refer to, to it at some time, the changes, the pages of the changes are on the first page.
We did, uh, the first thing was just the revision date change. And I'm looking for the numbers on the, uh, census that I updated. Ah, there we go. They come from the twenty-twenty census? Yes, there, so the twenty-twenty census was very poorly done, um, it was right in the middle of COVID. Um, in fact, I did not even update all of the census data in here because seventy-five percent of it's just not available. Um, so I went in and I updated what they did have. Um, those numbers, I think we have fifty-four percent participation in Edgefield County, which is, you know, compared to the eighty that we usually get is pathetic. Um, so these numbers will probably change drastically at the next census. Um, but unfortunately, when it comes to census data, it's, it's census data, it's the only data we can use. So I just updated it with what I had on the ones that I did have. Um, most of it is simple stuff, median values, rent values, um, number of housing units. Those were the sort of things that they did have. Um, now what they did was they extrapolated that data directly from, um, you know, building permit data that we have to submit to the state every month. Um, and of course, that data can be anywhere from three to six months behind current conditions. Um, but it is one of the few data points that they did have that I could update, so I went ahead and updated that.
But that one, how can that, the revision value, is that, that the census value?
That is census value as compared to US property values. So they're saying that's basically the housing market, which obviously you know that our, our current house prices are closer to two forty to two fifty for, for basic homes. But like I said, this was in twenty-ten, I mean twenty-twenty, and it was behind, I mean, it was a bad census year. But they still did it, they still published it, so I updated it with what information they had. Nine-two, that's where I was. The one oh eight. Alright. The next change is on page one hundred and eight under the state residential. This cat, this used to say the overall density of residential development is projected to be one house on five acres. However, the minimum lot size in the land use areas is seen to be approximately two acres inside. Okay, so that's a conflict, obviously. You can't have a density of one unit per five acres and a density of one unit per two acres. So I took the lot size out altogether and just left the one house per five acres. Then we need, well, we could, um, but obviously this doesn't dictate lot size. So I can leave that sentence and change it from two to five, but it will still say the exact same thing, the density should be one house per five acres. Either way you write it, it's, it's gonna be the same. Right now, it's a conflict because you have one saying that it's gonna be one house per two acres and another one saying it's gonna be one house per five acres. So deleting that line actually makes it more restrictive than it currently is. Yes, so remember, this, this primarily is used by you to make our legislative documents. So whenever we go to make land development regulations, zoning regulations, et cetera, you use this document to create those rules. Or, for example, a PUD comes in and y'all are doing a review on a PUD, you would use this document instead of your current regulation because this document is what is meant to guide you and provide you with the information you need to create the new ordinance. So you would then move to this and say, okay, you have a hundred and fifty acres for a PUD. If it's supposed to be, if, if that density is supposed to be one unit per five acres, then you could calculate that out using this instead of using, you know, whether it's GC, GR, LC, whatever. Instead of using the zoning, you would then switch to this because a PUD, you would be creating a new zoning.
Okay, so that means the average, the average, or about the average, is one house per five acres.
So if these re- That's correct, that's one house per five acres within that development, so that would be the average density. If you assumed that the entire area was being developed, then as long as you hold to that density level, your overall density by the time it's done would be one unit per five acres. Now, that does not mean that you can't allow smaller lots and then allow some land to go into conservation, or allow some land to be more green space, or allow, you know, townhouses in this section and then make ten acre lots in this section and five acre lots in this section. It's saying that the average in the development should be one unit per five acres.
Yeah, so my question is, is what can we do about, and what can we, and all the houses and what can we, the home and the place? But we don't do this in average, a one house per five acres.
That is correct. Mm-hmm. Those of you sitting up there? So a PUD, you cannot, once, once county council dictates what that zoning in that PUD is, it's locked into place until county council changes it. So if somebody comes in and says, I want to redevelop this, uh, remaining fifty-four acres that we left as green space, they have to, first, they have to apply to the planning commission and you have to make a recommendation to council to change that zoning. And then they have to go to council and go through that whole process again to actually get it approved to put something on those fifty-four remaining acres. Because a PUD is almost like a snapshot. Whatever council approves at that time, that's what gets locked into place until this board and county council change it to something else.
Yeah, we look at that, on the, on the, of that. But I think, you know, potentially, maybe starting like, like, if it's, you know, we're gonna have development where the average, um, development thirty, one house per five acres, and then there are, the, the, spread out over, some hundred fifty acres, and then whoever, then yesterday.
So-
And that's what, I think, when, when we did this, we did this, having years ago, and working around the county for the citizens, that was the intent, when they say like, we don't want small lots, development surrounded. We would like to see, we, we're saying that it's coming, we're in a large development, but we want larger lots, we want to, the rule, yeah, about how it's, larger lots.
So I understand that, but also you have to understand that you do have to allow a diversity of housing in the county. You can't say all the lots in Edgefield County are gonna be five acres. That's illegal, you can't do that.
But what she's talking about in this category, is that what's going to be the problem?
Okay, a, and that's, that's fine, but again, this document is telling you what the density is. If you believe that that PUD should be all five acre lots, then that's the condition you set during the PUD. That's your recommendation to county council is, hey, we don't want these quarter acre lots, or eighth acre lots, or whatever they happen to apply for. We think they should be two and a half acre lots, minimum size, and go up from there. You have that power. Remember, you can choose to not recommend the PUD simply because you don't like their presentation. There is no obligation on, on y'all's part, or on county council's part, to approve a PUD. You don't, you don't even have to consider the PUD if you don't want to. So if a PUD is brought to you and the plan is so far out from what you want, then you tell them what, what you wanna see, and if they can't meet that, then in your recommendation to council, you would say, look, we only recommend you approve this PUD if they set their minimum lot size to one and a half acre, or if they set their minimum lot size to five acre, or whatever it is you're looking for. Um, if you think that it would be inappropriate to build it without bus stops, I mean, that's still a reason for denial. You can say, look, we're not going to recommend approval of this PUD unless you put these bus stops in. It's, it's literally a negotiation on the developer's part with the planning commission and then with county council.
So if we know, it's still a, it's a-
Yes, because it is a creation of a law. So any creation of the law requires county council. They are the legislative authority of the county, um, and there are no limits on their ability to do that. So the planning commission can absolutely just say, you know what, we, we do not recommend approval of a PUD on this property at all. And yes, that recommendation still has to go to council for them to say, you know what, we agree, we don't think that's an appropriate place for a PUD, wipe it out, or they may, you disagree with me. Um, but being a new ordinance, they have to, they have to say one way or the other. Now, major subdivisions, no, that does not go to council. But you also can't use the comp plan on that, so it's a little bit different.
So on the, that's what I'm trying to say, is zoning.
Our land development regulation. So for instance, if somebody comes on, on a highway three-seventy-eight and says, I want to do a development here, it's gonna be well and subject tank, and you would look at our ordinances and go, okay, well, if it's gonna be on well and subject tank, you gotta have two and a half acre lot size, minimum lot size. And it's set in stone. So unless you recommend a change to the law, you can't approve it unless they meet that two and a half acre lot size, for example. It goes, anything that is used by right, like a major subdivision or land use, you go strictly by the regulations that are in place. Now, you can make recommendations to change those regulations to council, but you review it based off of the regulations, not off of the comp plan. Now, you can use the comp plan and say, hey, look, this is out of line with our comp plan, we don't approve of it. But of course, if you deny based on the comp plan, they have a legal mechanism to basically ignore you.
So, and that's what, this, this, I don't know, two, um, the number, over a hundred, two, one, but with this, that's enough, because you know, it's not.
Right. Right, but here's the thing, you want flexibility in your planning. If you say one in five acres, why would you want to say minimum two acre? You're just confusing the matter. Why not just say, look, we want to see an average of one in five acres? And if they bring you a plan that does not meet that, or, let's just say that they put a bunch of quarter acre lots and it's those specifically, for those quarter acre lots you don't like, don't approve it. Tell them they have to change it. And you can tell them that it has to be half acre, or two and a half acres, or three acres. That's entirely up to you, as long as they meet the density that is required by the comp plan. And then how do you handle attached housing? How do you handle apartment complexes? How do you handle other uses that you have multifamily inside of it? What about duplexes? You can. Well, not anymore because I removed it, which we'll get to in a minute, but it was allowed, so... I mean, I'm just saying, this document is for you. You don't have to approve anything. One per five acres is a more restrictive rule than a minimum lot size requirement. Also, minimum lot size is appropriate for zoning. Leave it to your zoning. So if you want some developed land development regulation, let's say on, I don't know, Sweetwater Road, the remainder of Sweetwater Road that's not zoned anyway, then you would go by this and say, okay, we expect to have one house per five acres. Now, does that mean that you have to zone all of Sweetwater Road at five acre lots? No, it does not. What it means is you need to look at the area you're zoning and you need to get an average of one house per five acres. So if you think right up against, say, the city limits of Edgefield, it's fine for half acre lots or multifamily, that's up to you. Because it's right on the edge of Edgefield, you could say, look, it can be a little bit denser here, but we want five acre lots here, or we want, you know, two and a half acre lots here. That gives you that flexibility to do that, without having to change the comp plan. Yes, I have, I, I don't have the ability to edit the map, but we will change it to match. So if we, if we set this to one per five acres and leave it like that, then I will go in there and I'll put one unit per five acres on the map. Right. One unit per five is what it will change to. So I gotta get Keisha to do that. Alright. Next is suburban density, so again, I cleaned that up. It had, average lot size may vary from half to two to three acres. Instead, I put it has to be two units per acre or less. Says the same thing, just says it better. Then in table seven point three, y'all requested that I delete the word density from the suburban and village residential land use categories. Y'all didn't like it because it was confusing, because the rest of them don't have it, so I just deleted the word density from those titles. No, less density. Remember, I changed the word from lot size to density, so it's not a reduction, two acres or less lot size, it's density, two acres or less, which means you could have half acre, you could have two acre, you can have three acre, but you can't have eight acre. Because density, the lower it is, the more space you have, the higher it is, the less space you have. Not lot size, not the same thing. But it says the exact same thing that it currently says, it just says it very simply. Okay, um... So, let's see. Okay, yeah, I can make those changes. Yeah, I got you. So as a investor, if you have to, as a flash investor. So we'll just, we'll go through there and make sure those, no. Alright, table seven point four, y'all wanted small lot residential removed from the conditional allowances in rural ag and the state residential. So I removed them. Um, in your first iteration of this chart that I sent you, it was not added and not allowed, but it was pointed out to me via email that if you take it out of conditional, put it somewhere else. So I put it in not allowed, just to make sure that that's clear, that we are taking away smaller lot residential from conditional allowance. I guess that would depend on the land use category and up to your discretion. Remember, this is your plan, so what is multifamily residence, I mean village density, ah, wow, I believe it's density, but village residential compared to a state residential, what's a small lot? Up to interpretation. Yeah, well, it's a comp plan, it's a plan. There's not a, not a definition in here for it. Rural agriculture is own zone in Edgefield County. So no, you can do anything you want to, from a dog kennel to a nuclear power plant. The comp plan doesn't control land use, it controls your planning for developing land use regulation. Correct. So it serves the public, it is a business, you are making an income off of it. So for instance, if you got a home office and you're selling, I don't know, knickknacks out of your house, I mean, that's, that's a home business, that's commercial use. If you put in a miniature Walmart, that's still, that's a commercial use. If you put in a manufacturing facility, well, that's an industrial use. What kind of commercial? You do that with zoning. You can't, like I said, if somebody applies, that's correct, and if you look at the map, a state residential, suburban residential, village residential, those are all zoned areas of the county. So the issue with rural agriculture is that when the LMO was scrapped, in the LMO, it was zoned, but it is no longer zoned, we did away with that zoning district altogether. So that seventy percent or so of the county is still unzoned. In unzoned land, you cannot restrict land use. That's the law. If you pass a law that restricts land use, you have zoned it, that's the definition of zoning, to control lot size, setback, and land use. So if you write an ordinance that controls those things, you have zoned it. And you use zoning to determine what would or would not be appropriate. So if you want to say that a Dollar General is appropriate, but a Walmart is not, then that's what your zoning is for. You would say small retail is allowed, large retail is not. But if somebody who is in a rural agricultural area right now, uh, like some of the people that are gonna be here for the regular meeting today, wanna do a dog kennel and they're on unzoned property, you can't deny them even if it specifically says, commercial uses are not allowed there. You can't deny them based on that, it's a use by right. You can put conditions on it, but you can't make it illegal. So you can't say that in the northwestern section of Edgefield County only, we're not allowing this particular use. That's zoning, you just zoned the northwestern portion of Edgefield County. Because you wrote an ordinance that controls land use, that's zoning, that's, that's what zoning is. But you absolutely can say, look, we wanna create a agricultural district and we wanna zone the entire unzoned portion of the county, and we only want to allow these specific commercial uses, and we only want to allow these specific residential uses, and lot sizes have to be two and a half acres minimum, you can absolutely do that. But that's, that's still a zoning ordinance. Yeah, but that is, at, well, so first off, specifically, we are limiting lot size based off of water and sewer. It is not based off the area in which it is located, it is based off the water and sewer. Two, it's questionably legal, according to the judge in there. Alright, so I'll move on. Alright, I'll, I'll make the rest quick. So suburban density residential, village density residential, again, just cleaned up that language, made sure that density was deleted from there, that's pretty much the only change on that. Okay, well, y'all need to make whatever recommendation changes that you wanna make too, so that I can actually change them, so please write them up and send them to me if you want additional edits. Yes, I mean, i-if you're not gonna do it here, then you need to type it up, I mean, I have to be able to include it so that we can discuss it in an open meeting. Um, the remainder of the changes, like, uh, zoning descriptions, I deleted GD, added GRGC. That's, that matches the ordinances that we created. Um, I added West Martin Town Road. I added West Martin Town Road to the Aiken County line from Old Martin Town. So that's just that little limited commercial district at the very end of Martin Town as it goes into the city of North Augusta. Uh, we just added the commercial overlay there for signage and setback and la da da. Uh, that was at y'all's request. Um, new zoning overlays, I deleted all of the overlays, pretty much. Um, I deleted the area overlays that were outside of Edgefield and Johnston, which y'all requested. I changed the Sweetwater overlay to match the commercial overlay that's already there and removed the rest of that overlay, so there was going to be a secondary residential overlay. Um, removed that, which y'all's request. Yes, we will, I just don't have the ability to do that, but we, I'll get Keisha to make the maps all the way through. Because, well, so we, we discussed that with, yeah, we discussed that and it was determined that now is not the time- and it was determined that now is not the time that we need to add those overlays. So, we're, we're moving them, and we can go back at a later date, see if that needs to be recalculated. But it was determined that we don't have enough growth in those areas than necessitate overlap. Uh, Sweetwater Road overlay, just changed it to match what's there. Um, Martin Town Road overlay, um, I basically just deleted the elements. So, I deleted, the overlay could include elements like on Sweetwaters, such as wooden fences that have its own needs and distinctive characteristics. I removed that because basically, we're just leaving that commercial overlay at the end, which doesn't have those sorts of regulations in it. So, didn't see any need to keep that. Deleted Town, Edgefield Growth Area and Johnston Growth Area. And that's it. That's all that.
Okay, okay. Your business, if you were land development, have a test with the left, the whole, the dog training, four hundred facilities, you know, they don't buy that. To a ninety-one, a lot of dollars, eleven, you know, it allows cross street road, it's Edgefield.
Now, which one is Edgefield Cross Street? Alright, so, Chris, you there?
Hey, I'm here.
Can you hear me alright?
I can hear you, yeah, I remember it, it's kind of very good and awful, like, in terms of the, the, the song, but, um, yeah, I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, I'll repeat anything they say, just to make sure we, we, we go through this. Um, obviously, y'all probably already read the packet, it's a dog kennel, unzoned area. Any questions?
Well, uh, Chris, uh, coming in, you tell me from twenty-five, what you say, that, you tell me from the opposite, what you, you know, twenty-five.
He said, "If you're coming from twenty-five, where is the tra-" Sorry, can you repeat that?
Which direction, I, 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 I understand what you're about to say, your major traffic, uh, be coming in, be coming from twenty-five, north or from the opposite.
So, will your, may, would the traffic to your facility be coming from Highway twenty-five north, or the opposite direction?
Um, so, pretty much all times, you know, so, you are in two that field, pretty much, you're northwest, I have a little twenty-five track, and that will go over Cross Street Road, uh, so, essentially, grab up, hit the left on the Cross Street, and we're about five six hundred yards off of twenty-five.
So, most of his traffic was going-
Page eight, in your binder, will show you the location on D R S, and it will show, it shows, uh, Highway twenty-five, and Cross Street, and the location of the building.
So, give you a concept, if you look at the map on there, you'll see this is, uh, Moore Road, Moore's Road, where RR R is. That's that, uh, horse farm that was built. It's right before you get that, if you're coming from Edgefield, right there.
Also, wanted to follow that side of the, uh, the, uh, person, uh, it is way too hot in there, it's freezing, it's getting kind of seventy-four degrees, it's very dark tonight, so, coming up with this, 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 like, to make the offer, um, you can just drive, uh, if you all call.
Yep, not a problem. Do y'all have any more questions?
That's, that's kind of over there, right?
Yes.
That's really, that's that, with, not what I do.
Yes.
And sort of answer questions that were in the past, uh, was, what we do, what, how we use the hair or whatnot, they just separate it, but what it does is, like, it's simple. Every day, we bring, maybe the water, maybe the rain, everything like that. Uh, we have this involved at home, it's all finding, hunting, active and bringing, it's a great fun. Uh, so, essentially, just allow, uh, we were there at night, and every day, I had, uh, cars, and you're working, and we're, we're having, something like that.
Alright, sounds like you're good. We'll have to vote at the next meeting, but we're, we're good. We don't have any more questions. Alright?
The next, uh, we do a land development, that is, old, old, old board, that was trained in this board. It's gonna be okay, apart from one oh two, you know, you know, you know, you know, eight one, it's allowed, three water road, not the, not the, not the, yeah. Alright, good, good. Alright, man, go to room.
So, my name's Alan, we're the, um, you know, probably, the Sweetwater Room, we have a lot here, uh, it's about thirty-six. Uh, I used to be in the dog training for about eighty years, in a new building, and send the dog to the main court, and, uh, uh, pretty, been, uh, pretty solid, and, 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 uh, cutting out, uh, uh, lots, everyone had a ring, and we installed a work facility, it was in the east of the area. And, uh, you know, the works out, works out, I'd be great, it's nice, I'm trying to protect it there, uh, really nice one, uh, in order to, uh, uh, work station. So, I stopped, uh, just stopped twelve hundred feet off of there, this one, uh, building, and, uh, obviously, they accepted, I got set to permanent, uh, in this station, there's, you know, big ass. Um, as you say, there's separated, uh, uh, we played it out, it's, uh, played it out. I think, uh, it was kind of, uh, one of them, but through, asking, uh, uh, thirty percent, uh, which is, you know, I, I'm a high schooler, and for, hope, here, and makes a lot of dollars, and good, that's, uh, uh, as well. I think, uh, it was kind of, uh, one of them left through the high school, uh, ten percent, uh, which is, you know, I, I said, it's more, but here, and then it's all about the clean gas, whatever, and, uh, whatever.
Directly across from Indian Ridge. It's way back, on the other side of Indian Ridge.
Yeah, um, there, there, I know, somebody, you know, on, uh, um, I have those, um, um, and I'm like, yeah, but, but, I know, that would be, I know, like, this, it would be, uh, nine one, second sign, I don't know, what's the, I don't keep.
Um, so, he would be allowed to have a single monument style sign. So, I mean, he can't put a billboard up or anything like that, but he could have a simple sign, yeah. And yes, we do have a countywide sign ordinance that dictates certain specifications for signs. Um, but the, the only thing that, and you're allowed to have one sign per lot, basically. Um, so, short of a billboard, yeah, he could put up like a monument sign or a small freestanding sign, if he wanted to. It would have to be on his land, and it would have to not impede traffic. So, being a flag lot, I mean, you have to figure that out with DOT.
I'm not, right. I want to say, it's just, it's going like, oh, wait.
It's at least fifty.
Oh, wait, right, you're fifty.
It's at least fifty. That's the minimum required by our ordinance. So, it wouldn't have got cut out less than that.